Hello, we're live. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oiling Greg and Amanda Kilwin.
Hello, everybody.
We also have Colin and Julie from our team with us. What's up, you guys?
Hello.
How's it going, everyone?
As always, we are thrilled to have you. Let us know where you're coming in from, wherever in the world you might be. We are today focusing on getting started with Get Oiling. So if you're new here, or if you still feel kind of new, which, you know, low key, it might be your year in and you still feel that way and it's totally fine and it's understandable because there's so much you can do with us. So I would always kind of keep that I'm new around here hat on because it's going to keep you open to new opportunities to grow and learn. And we're going to get into what some of those are here today. Starting with the basics that everybody should know. And so if you didn't fit, if you don't feel like you got off on the right foot, this is going to be a great opportunity for you to reorient yourself and then start to see where your bigger goals are in alignment with this path. We're going to talk about making this more simple, streamlined, and of course, avoiding the big overwhelm in getting all of this done. So again, as you're coming in, let us know where you're coming in from. Pop over into the chat. We're always excited to hear from you. And this, if you're brand new and you've never been to one of these calls before, we do this every week unless it is a holiday here in in the US. And, and so we do this for free for all Young Living brand partners. So if you're here and you're just getting started, just going to want to learn a little bit about us and how we can help you grow Young Living, you're in the right place. If you're here and you're looking for help and support and hands-on help with what you're doing, this is also the right place for you. So we are really excited to have you here today and excited to have Team YL here on our call every Thursday at noon Eastern. And so what's up? Arizona, Ontario, Connecticut. Hello, we're excited to have you. We're going to go ahead and get into some slides. I want to make sure that we have that we've, we've really got space on our call here today to work with you if you need specific support. So I've got some, some kind of basic concepts we're going to go through, talking about getting started the right way. But then we'll explore some other opportunities as well beyond just getting things rolling. So we're going to go ahead and pop out a video and get into these slides. And then we're going to be coming back together here at the close of our call to go through any questions that you might have and work together as we, as we're done with the slides here today. All right. And please remember that if you have questions as we're going through this content, to put your, your questions into the Q and A so that we don't miss anything from you in the chat. All right. So today, we will be getting started with Get Oiling. So what's happening today is we're going to talk about the simplest and most impactful approach to getting started with us. How you can maximize your time and avoid overwhelm, and then how to create a solid game plan to get the most out of your system. And then of course, again, we have space here today for live help and Q and A. So if you have questions or you need specific help, please make sure you add that request to the Q and A so that we don't miss it. And then if you're watching this as a replay on YouTube, you can find more calls like this on getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. We are live on Zoom every week, Thursday at noon Eastern. And if you'd like to be notified of upcoming calls and get the link to join us live, you can go to this link and get yourself signed up. So if you want to have help on a live call, be sure to sign up at getoiling.com/web site review. This is an opportunity for us to work together live on a call just like this one. Now, question for those of us who are here today, let me know in the chat. Are you new to Get Oiling? If you are new here today, let me know. Maybe you're not new, but you're still getting a feel for things, right? Let us know who you are, where you're at in the chat. And I'm also curious to know what made you decide to get started. Awesome. So not new, still learning. Awesome. Great. Got just a couple of months. It's always a good time to get yourself reoriented. So fantastic. So what was the thing that made you decide to get started with Get Oiling? Let's see, still getting a feel for things, want to build my business, like having a system. Excellent. Needed organization, an email system. Fantastic. So we got some established reasons, right? Some of them were general, some were specific. But let me ask you this. When you sit in you, especially for those of you who really know the capacity of Get Oiling, what is the, like the number one thing, the top thing that you want to get out of using Get Oiling? What's the number one thing that would make really the biggest impact to you that you want to get done in using this system? Is there a number one? Do you have like seven of them? Awesome. Oh, I'm seeing some great goals in here in the chat. You guys keep them coming. So here's a question for you and you could, you can answer, you know, silently to yourself or in the chat. It's completely up to you. How long have you been with Young Living in a business focused way? Now, this is going to impact just a little bit of, of how we make our choices moving forward. Right? Because what your business needs might be different from the person next to you, right? And how long you've been with the business and what kind of focused effort you've put into the business so far is going to make a little bit of a difference in terms of how you go about using your Get Oiling system, depending on where your business is at, right? Because you could, you could be with Young Living for 20 years, but maybe you sat things down and your actives aren't active anymore. Your personals aren't active anymore and you're kind of regrowing and rebuilding, right? We've all found ourselves in a place like that at some point, right? Where we're either getting started or restarting, right? All right. So now a question for you. Got three categories for you here. Let me know which of these sounds the most like you. And you might be more than one of these things, but you're probably, you're mostly one of these things. Okay? So number one, I'm just starting or restarting my Young Living business. And I have fewer than 30 active personally enrolled customers. All right, that's category one. I have fewer than 30 actives personals. I am just starting out or I'm restarting. I'm building back up to that point and beyond. Okay? Number two, I have an established Young Living business that might be demanding too much of my time. Maybe I'm in management mode. Maybe I am being customer support for people. Maybe I feel a load of expectations on my shoulders and I am spending a ton of time on things that I'm pretty sure didn't get me to where I am. Right? And then finally, and this is where you could be a plus or also number three, you're either number one or you're number two, but you may also be number three. Be mindful of whether this is you as well. I'm looking for ways to diversify and level up alongside my Young Living business. So this is going to apply to you if you also have a, you know, an adjacent business, if you're a coach, if you are an AFT practitioner, if you do something that gets oiled, right? And you want to use, if you want to use Get Oiling to help you to manage that, right? So a lot of us are also a three because you can do it all with us, right? While managing your Young Living business in the most effective way possible. All right. So we're, we're either one or two, and we may also be three. All right. So just be thinking about who you are, because I am going to be making some specific recommendations around these specific numbers as we progress. So just keep an eye out for that. All right. So share in the comments, which you guys have been doing. Thanks for letting us know. All right. So regardless of where you are at right now and where you were when you got started with Get Oiling, the simplest and most impactful approach to getting started with us is to tend first to the business you have. Right? Now, this is, it's a, it's a little bit of a different mindset, right? When we're thinking about planning and mindset in our actions and, and sort of how we, how we see ourselves visualizing and manifesting and growing, we look at the business we want, right? We say, I am a royal crown diamond so that we can start to embody the traits and the characteristics acting as if, right? But when we're talking about building the systems and plugging into the systems that can manage us so that we don't have to do everything ourselves, it's important for us to be very clear on what we have and to work with it first. No matter where it's at, you got to give it love to let it grow. We all start off as babies, learn to crawl, learn to walk and so on. So we got to start with the business you have, even if it's just a tiny baby business. And as a brand partner, that means you're personally enrolled at any other customers that you are personally supporting. Okay? The business you have are you're personally enrolled and any other customers that you are personally supporting. Okay. If you look at your VO file and it has 10,000 people in it, that does not mean that you're responsible for 10,000 people, right? Because there are other relationships down that line. And we don't need to get super worried about that, right? If you are, you know, somebody who has that large of a team and you're just getting started here and you feel totally, you know, spun and strung, please reach out to us. I work with leaders in this company and I can help you get things on straight and help your team get in line here. So if that's you, and I know that's not everybody that's on this call, do know that we have strategic support for you. So with Get Oiling, what we need to do first is tend to our people using the contact manager. This is the absolute first, most important thing that we need to do and learn when we get started, right? Now, the very first thing that you're going to want to do with your contact manager is to take your VO file that's from your Young Living account is to upload the information from your VO file and put it in to Get Oiling, right? And that training looks like this. All right. And you are going to see a link in the description on the recording of this. And I think team, we have a copy of that link in our, in our Slack channel as well. So how to import and update your Young Living Virtual Office reports for easy communication? Watch this if you have done nothing else yet. This should be the first thing that you do so that you can go, and even if you have one customer as a brand partner, even if you just have one, you need to learn how to do this. Okay. And thank you so much, Amanda. You've got that link right here. Let me copy this. I think it just went out to the hosts. So I'm going to put this right here for everyone. There we go. So how to important update your VO reports? This is going to be the first most important thing that you do with Get Oiling. Okay. Now, we do have in the description, if you click this, it's going to take you to YouTube. And I do have the slides for this there. So you can actually open up that PDF file, all of the trainings that I show inside of it and reference are clickable. And of course, we walk through exactly what it looks like screenshot by screenshot while you're in your Young Living account so that you can download the right information and then upload it into your Get Oiling account. Okay? So why would we do this first? First, it's because this is the most critical maintenance activity in your Get Oiling system as a brand partner. If we, if we agree that your business is the people you have relationships with that are in Young Living, right? That you've introduced Young Living to, because your, your number one, number one job as a Young Living brand partner is to get more people to try Young Living, right? But equal to that number one job is to make sure that you maintain a relationship with the people that you have introduced Young Living to so that they can actually use the products long enough and in the best direction so that they have a hero product that is just an absolute no brainer for them to share. We are not done in our work with our people until we've done that thing, right? So that means that our most critical maintenance activity in our Get Oiling system as a brand partner means we are always going to have up-to-date information inside of our sort of unified dashboard that is Get Oiling. So we can see who's on subscription and who is not. We can see who we've reached out to recently and who we need to reach out to next. So we have to make sure that this is something that we're doing and it's the most important thing to learn and focus on first. So learn to do it now because this is an activity that you're going to want to repeat on a weekly basis. Okay? Now, your second biggest business asset is your relationship. Of course, your, your first business, biggest business asset is you, right? We need to be improving you because you are the tool that translates people into Young Living customers, right? So you are obviously the, the biggest asset. But the second biggest business asset is the set of relationships that you have with people who can become and who are your Young Living customers, the people that you've introduced Young Living to. Okay? So we're going to maintain those relationships by staying organized and on top of what's needed next. Because the more relationships you have, the more challenging it is for you to just stuff all this stuff into your brain and try to remember who you're supposed to reach out to. At what point in the process are they toward you, sharing with them toward you, getting them onto their next product that they try and so on. And so this means personally staying in touch with all these folks and not just, you know, obviously you can send out bulk emails and texts with Get Oiling. But you're gonna want to be personally in touch and not just blasting information out to a large group of people. One of these is more powerful than the other and it's the personal touch one. And we can make that something that is manageable and easy to interact with. That doesn't actually take you a ton of time if we do it right. Okay. So these are the things I want you to focus on learning in the Get Oiling system first. Adding tags to your contacts, filtering your list of contacts for tags. So if you want to find people who, who are your customers versus people who are not, right? That's an opportunity to search a tag and then only send a message to your customers. Of course, leaving your leads aside to communicate with differently. Adding notes and to-dos for your contacts. And then sending emails or texts to a contact on a one-on-one basis. Most important things you need to learn to do first so that you can know who people are and find them easily in your system. And, and then of course, know what you need to do with them next and sending those messages to them, personal messages to them as needed, as you are maintaining that relationship. All right. So the additional trainings that I want you to consider are as follows in order. I would do only one of these at a time and I would focus on one before the other if you haven't done them all. Okay? These are all on our YouTube channel. This first one is, it's how to maintain your list of leads. And it's going to try to play the video for some reason here. Sorry. Please don't do that. All right. So this is the big picture strategy for your contact manager. And it is especially, especially important if you identify with number two or number three on that list that we talked about before. Okay? Now, the second one, effective strategies for staying connected with your customers and team. This is going to be leveraged communication that will keep you from falling into the talking at trap. Okay? So this is going to be a really important one to follow. If maybe you have already been communicating with your people, maybe you've used broadcast, you know, via email or text, but, but you don't necessarily feel like it's doing what you want it to do. This is going to be an important one for you to, to watch, right? And this is absolutely critical for you. If you identify with number two in the list previously, meaning you've got over 30 personal actives, you've got a team that is likely quite large, and you've got a lot of people that you need to keep in touch with, more so than just the manual maintenance. And you, you need to have more leverage in how you get the word out. Now, the final piece of, of this in the sequence here is, is using our features to maximize how you spend your time, right? So this is time management. And everyone needs to watch this one regardless of where you're at. This is using follow-up plans in your contact manager as well as the digital upline coach. All right. Everyone's got to watch this one. Personal Assistant for Young Living Brand Partners. Thank you so much for putting those links in the chat there. We will have these in the description when we upload this to YouTube later. All right. So maximizing your time and avoiding overwhelm. Let's get into this next because when you think about all the things you can do with Get Oiling, it's really easy to get overwhelmed because there's so much you can do with us. But nobody expects you to do it all at once. That's just not reasonable. So don't expect that of yourself. So let's talk about how we can create real plans that work well for you to achieve what it is that you're looking for in, you know, not a super slow fashion by any means, but in a way that doesn't overwhelm you. Okay? So let's talk about how we avoid overwhelm here. First, it's so, so very important that we know the difference between a need and a want in our business. Let me know in the chat. Do you feel confident that you are clear on what your business needs versus what you feel like you want for it? In terms of how you put your time and what resources you use? Is that something that you feel like you're clear on? So what I want to encourage you to do is first, be clear on what the needs are. And I will go over a list of them here in the next slide. If you don't feel confident or clear in, in what those really are, it's actually very simple, very few. So know, know what the difference is. And then where you have wants that are not needs, where you have wants and ideas. Wants typically pertain to the business you want, not the business you have right now, right? So our first goal that we've talked about so far in this training is to first learn how to support the business you have so that we can keep that plate spinning as we move forward, right? The next thing you want to do is make a list for yourself of the wants and ideas so that you can take pieces of those projects and plan them into your weekly activity where you're covering the needs. Right? Does that make sense? Breaking those down into bite-sized pieces. So if we get the needs done first, then we work on the wants, right? Eat your broccoli before you have your dessert, right? So I got to get the vegetables in. All right. So what does a brand partner business need? Like what are the actual things that are needed from you as a brand partner? Number one, your business needs you to spend over 70% of your active time on activities that lead to new sales. Period. New sales, new people, new people that you're sharing with. Over 70% of your active time on bringing in new business, right? So this is going to be prospecting, having conversations with people who could become Young Living customers, inviting people to see Young Living products and learning about them, inviting them to experience them and inviting them to get started. And then finally, following up and closing your sales. Your business needs you to be spending 70% of the time you spend on your business on these things. That's it. And then, of course, also critical, your business needs you to work with your new personals to integrate Young Living product use until they have a hero product that they can't help but share. All right. This is it. Young Living has their own customer support. Young Living has their own education. If you really want to supplement education, there are great resources out there that you don't have to create yourself. But you also don't have to be the fountain of that knowledge, you guys. Have you ever looked at Young Living's blog? Everything your people need to know is probably there first. Right? So if you introduce your customers to that blog and you show them that, hey, you know, you can search the content on their site, they're going to find a lot of the answers that they need themselves. Not through you, right? You're not their mother, right? You aren't their oily professor. You are simply someone whose life has changed because you use these products and you are dedicated to helping others see the same result. And you don't have to hold their hand for every single question and every single issue that they have. You can be a guide for them, but you don't need to be the deliverer of everything. These are the things that your business needs. That's it. This is it. So we can have peace with knowing this and then know that everything else that you feel is a demand of your time might not be a need. It might be a want, or we should examine this as well. It might be a misplaced expectation, meaning we might feel that this is something that is expected of us when it's really not. Or we could have potentially created this expectation in others that we can remove, right? We, we can, we can change the nature of those relationships to where those things aren't expectations anymore. Obviously, if you, if you've built the expectation that you're going to be there at every step for every answer and basically serving as their personal customer service, then there is going to be a period where you transition out of that, which you should absolutely start doing right now, if that's you, right? This is it. Okay. And then critically, be pointing, always be pointing to information, ideally as close to the source as possible. Young Living has loads and loads and loads of great content and you should be pointing people to the company. What's your job? Your job as a brand partner is to share Young Living. If somebody needs to know something about Young Living, why would we go anywhere other than Young Living first? First, point to Young Living where questions come up. And you know what? When they have a question, instead of delivering the answer to the question to them, go find the source for that answer and then let them know, I, I believe I found the answer on Young Living's site page about whatever, right? Let them go type it in the browser and go find it. Empower people to find their own answers. Okay, this is a total tangent. All right. So everything that isn't those things is a want. Everything that isn't this stuff, screenshot this, everything that isn't this is a want in your business. These are the needs. Okay? Everything else is a want. So let's create a game plan so that we can address our wants. Because I want you to have everything you want, right? I just want you to make sure that you're eating your broccoli first, right? We got to do what our business needs. Then we can address the things that we want. Okay? So everyone has got to start with this one. And that's our critical needs, our actual needs for our business. So get your VO file uploaded correctly and repeat it weekly, right? Reference the training that I mentioned earlier and here on the slides. Then use follow-up plans or even rating your contacts to make sure you're in touch with your personals on their journey toward hero product status. Then be getting yourself out there and make sure you're making at least five new friends a week. You're adding them to your contact manager, keeping notes on your communications with them and staying in touch. Your number one job is to share Young Living with people who are ready to know and take next steps, right? So these are the absolute most critical activities for you until you are at least at a solid diamond. Okay? These are things you need to be doing all the time and focusing on primarily until you're a diamond. All right. If you are above diamond and you've got things that you are struggling with, you're going to learn a little bit more in the next slide, but it definitely encourages you to reach out to our team if you're higher up and you're looking for more targeted support. So from there, we can start creating plans to accomplish what we want, one step at a time. So first, let's create some leverage. This is going to be you if you have a larger team. So the first thing that you're going to want to consider doing is creating a vault to serve your customers. We have a move your groups off of Facebook course. So I want to encourage you to have this be a project that you put on your list to begin creating, to have a place where you can onboard your people. And of course, again, if you are at number one, don't worry about this yet. This is for number two on the list. Okay? So I want to encourage you to get a vault created so you can move your groups off of Facebook and get that updated on a monthly basis. Okay? You're going to use permission marketing and you're going to, if you don't know about our permission marketing systems, I go over them in the, the email marketing masterclass or the email marketing mastery course, which is something that you have access to as a member of the Get Oiling community. If you have an account with us, then you'll get access to this. Use a permission marketing system to invite all of the new folks in your organization to join and get your resources on a weekly basis. And then when you update your vault monthly, you send a monthly email out to those people that opted in, whether they're your personals or not, everybody gets an invite. Whoever says yes to getting it, great, send that out to them. Don't worry about anybody who doesn't say yes to this. They're going to or they're not going to. You're doing your part. You got to be in touch with your people one-on-one regardless. If you've done those things, you've done what's needed, right? So we send that stuff out to the folks who've opted in for updates. And if you've covered the needs effectively and then you've done these things, you as a brand partner, as a leader, have a complete system now to support your customers and your team. If you've done the needs list and this list, okay? Just remember, when you are focusing on creating leverage, you are not done with care calls with your customers until that customer has a hero product. And what you're going to find in your journey is that, you know, obviously you've got your personals and you want to work with them, but you're going to have some folks who maybe show up in your organization, maybe they get that email from you and they see that, oh, you know, this is somebody who might be able to help me. If they reach out and they don't have support, of course, treat them like a personal and help them get to that hero product point, right? We are not done with the one-on-one relationships ever in this business. We always want to be bringing in new people and we always want to be working with them until they have their hero product. Okay? Doesn't matter how much tech you leverage and automations and all this kind of amazing stuff you can do with us. It never will fully, completely replace a personal relationship. Okay? Okay. So now what if you want to be a personal brand? What if you are a brand already? Or that's something that is a goal of yours because there are other things that you do that aren't just Young Living or you want to brand yourself first and have Young Living be sort of your best kept secret that those in the know get to find out about. So what I want to encourage you to do first, when you get started with Get Oiling, you have a fully built Young Living compliant sharing website. You should be using that. You should be using that to share Young Living until you've got the needs part of your business covered, right? Use this. You don't need to reinvent the wheel, right? You have gorgeous, awesome tools that you can use right now, no matter where you are in the world, to compliantly introduce people to Young Living in a way that even builds curiosity, right? So make sure that you are doing that first. You don't have to go and create an entire personalized website before you can go do anything else. Use what you've got. We've got you covered, right? We've got the needs part covered. Then you can move into the want stuff, alright? Now, we have a course for you that includes all of the templates you need for this and full instruction on how to make it your own. It's called the Brand My Business Workshop. If you are ready to build a brand, follow what's in this course and you will have all of the five most necessary templates for your website complete. All of the I's dotted and T's crossed and everything beautiful, functional and working great together. Now, if you don't wanna DIY this, reach out. We can do it for you or with you, okay? That is something that our team can do. And uh, if you are ready to really differentiate, cause the Brand My Business Workshop has a built in lead generating funnel that's built into the system. You don't have to do anything to it. You can use what we've created. But if you're ready to create your own with your brand and offer for your brand, then you can create a lead generating funnel using the Lead Generation Workshop. It's free, it's quick, you can get it done in a just a few hours time or less. It's, it's actually pretty, pretty quick uh, to go through and get done. And then finally, follow the steps in the Email Marketing Mastery Course to develop your leveraged communication strategies. Of course, from that point, once you have these systems in place, you're gonna wanna be looking into creating brand content, places like YouTube and your blog with Get Oil-ing, putting content out there that serves and attracts your ideal people. So now, um, the key is to master one thing at a time and we've got you covered with getting this stuff done, you guys. Let's get into uh, our Q and A and see if there is any specific help that we can assist you with here on our call here today. Um, but I, I think that the most important thing for you to know, sitting here today, is that what's needed of you is a much shorter list than you have probably been considering, right? The most important things we need to do are the things that have made you successful already. If you've enrolled one customer, you know what you need to do. We just have to do more of that in a systematized way. And so if you're following the trainings that I've shared here today in order, I think you're gonna find it a lot easier to get that done. And then, of course, you'll know how to use the tools you've invested in uh, to accomplish that. So um, if your question hasn't been answered in the chat, I know there's definitely some stuff in the chat that I haven't seen yet, but I don't wanna spend all of our time here together uh, reading. So bring it over to the Q and A uh, i- if you have not done so already. So Rebecca asks, what if I have my own brand? Does the allotment of time change? For example, I may not be educating on all Young Living, even though Young Living is included in what I do. So your job with Young Living, believe it or not, is not to be an educator. Uh, that is not something that duplicates. Uh, it is certainly helpful, uh, but there are folks out there who have already created education that's perfectly sufficient. You're a pointer where Young Living is concerned and you, as a personal brand, I think it's even more important for you to have that clear delineation. So if there is a way in your brand and what you do on the backend where maybe the integration and teaching of product use in a strategic way is something that you do, um, then that's all well and good, but that's not your front facing content. And it's definitely not a need for the maintenance of your Young Living brand partner business as it exists. Um, so let me, let me ask you this, Rebecca, what is your um, what is your brand about? Like, who does it serve? And um, and what is it that you're offering them as a brand? Right? So beyond, you know, I can, you know, help facilitate your journey with Young Living, what are you offering? Uh, you could just pop that into the chat. You also said, uh, when doing a vendor event and branding myself, how could I handle that if other people from my Young Living team are there to build their businesses as well? So um, it depends, right? Um, if you are branding yourself, uh, then your table needs to be about your brand, right? And other people who are there to build their business, um, you know, need to have, you know, potentially their own table or maybe you split the table and you kinda make it clear, um, you know, what you do that's different. Okay, so you help moms with life coaching and AFT. Okay, so um, if you think about the thing that your life coaching and AFT and very likely the inclusion of, of oils, what that outcome is for the moms, make the table about that, right? Uh, make it about uh, stress management. And you can have, I mean, maybe if you're using uh, scanning at your table, you can offer some kind of a free experience to give people that opportunity or you could do um, like a mini AFT session there. Uh, or you know, give them maybe a, a free, that they get a free bonus class and if they come to it, maybe it's a set date and time, you let them register and they could do maybe a virtual EFT, uh, AFT with you. Uh, that kind of thing. So um, the allotment of time uh, doesn't change. Uh, it, to answer your first question, if you have multiple businesses, um, then we're, we're looking at, um, you know, are you spending fifty percent on one business and fifty percent on another? That's a, you know, a hundred percent, maybe you have ten hours a week to focus on your businesses. You're gonna maybe spend five on Young Living and five on your personal brand business or something like that. Um, know that one can feed the other, right? Like, you can have business A that is somewhat adjacent to business B, but your time on them is not the same, right? Um, your brand is its own thing and Young Living is something that benefits from your brand, right? Because you're gonna get more exposure to people um, who you could share Young Living with. Um, so I would focus on first making sure that when you're spending time on Young Living, that you're hitting that seventy percent is doing these things, right? Uh, and then, of course, uh, making sure that you're working with those personals in an appropriate way to get them to um, to that point of having a hero product. And then, um, yeah, the, the tricky thing about vendor events and sharing a table with someone else um, is that, you know, I typically like to recommend that you encourage your people to do for themselves, right? Um, where you guys can maybe come up with some kind of a um, a cooperative situation where maybe you are branding the table for moms and you get your, you know, your person, your partner on the same page about this. Um, then maybe you guys can do a split, right? If we've got five, you know, if we've got ten new leads, then we'll split fifty fifty, right? Uh, and then we'll, we'll follow up with those respective people. Um, but you do start to kinda complicate things as you, you know, add in stuff like that. So I would just, I would just try to simplify it as much as possible, where you're talking about having multiple folks at a, at a vendor event. Lisa says, I have the starter plan. Can I make two, I can make two landing pages? Can you buy extra landing pages separately? And if my website is currently WordPress, I assume the landing page can still tie back to the Get Oil-ing and the emails in the CRM. So um, your website that you have on WordPress is going to remain its own separate entity. You do have the option, if you would like to host your domain with us uh, and, and really use our system to its full capacity. Our team could even help you with this in migrating the content that you have on your WordPress site over to a custom site with Get Oil-ing that is going to require that you have a basic or higher plan. And um, and, and yeah, so what you can do, if you are utilizing your current WordPress site and you're not ready to make that, that jump just yet, I would encourage you to do it as soon as possible, cause it's gonna keep things simpler and easier for you to maintain in your business. Um, but what you would do is you would just link to those landing pages from your existing website or from your social or email or wherever you would be sharing the opportunity to opt in. Uh, and then, of course, when they opt in on that landing page and Get Oil-ing, they are going to go into your contact manager and get the emails from our system and so on. Okay, let's see. For the vendor event, you'd like to encourage them to be in their niche as well. So yeah, if, if, if you're about helping moms with stress, uh, and they're about dogs and whatever, like, they should probably have their own table, right? Um, you can, I mean, I guess it's gonna depend on the, the vendor event as well, right? In some cases, these are very like network marketing specific and they want you to say like, I am Young Living, I am this, I am that. But the fact is, is you could be anything. And I mean, you, you could have five different things you offer on the backend of your business, but your goal at a vendor event is just to get a bunch of leads, right? If people can say yes and buy something right there, that's fantastic. But the most likely thing that's going to happen is you're going to collect information from interested people and then you're gonna be in touch with them after the fact. So um, if there's a way for you to kind of visually and conceptually split a table and share it where your brand and their brand is technically at the same table, but offering two different things, then that's what I would encourage you to do, if that's what you're doing. Awesome. Does anybody else have questions or do you wanna take a look at anything together? Oh, here's, um, please try to make sure that you're getting your questions over into the Q and A. Um, Nicole, this is a good question here. I totally understand about directing people to source for their questions. Where does the balance come in between empowering them and serving them? Most of my peeps are professional women over fifty-five. They don't have time to research. This is excellent, excellent question. So the challenge here is in what expectations you're setting up for your people, right? Um, because if you go to the end of the earth, they're going to develop an expectation that that's what you're here for, right? So I would encourage you to keep a log of the kind of questions that you're asked, right? Cause this is going to be the kind of information that would be really well served in a vault in the future, right? So if you find that you're getting the same question frequently, then you can create a resource that you can send off really quickly and easily. What I would encourage though, and in terms of like the, the line between um, doing for them and empowering them, is to, instead of, let's just say, for instance, they wanna know like what the ingredients in Ningxia are or something like that, then you can say, actually, that is listed, um, both, I think it's on the bottle, it might not be on the bottle. Um, it's, it's actually listed, if you go to Young Living's website, so just tell them, go to Young Living's website, search the word Ningxia and it's going to be under, I think it's product information, or you know, just say, it's gonna be one of those things. And yeah, they're, they're gonna have to go type something into their browser and then they're gonna have a clear path. So the difference here is that we're giving them a clear path instead of feeding it to them directly, right? We're showing them where the fridge is instead of putting the food in their mouth. Does that make sense? It's not a whole lot of research. It's not a ton of steps, but we are saying, here's where you can find it. And if it's more complicated, right, um, then let them know what your sources are. And if you, if you, you can also say, are, are you looking for my advice or my experience? Let them say, yes, I wanna know your advice, your experience. Then you can say, well, here's what I've done, right? That's perfectly fine for you to share your own experience or for you to say, you know, I've heard of somebody such and such place and here's where I found that, right? Or if you wanna point to a resource like oil testimonials or an existing Facebook group or something like that, you could do that. But again, I would focus on showing them what the steps are to get what they want as opposed to um, just feeding it straight to them. Alright, Alison says, um, let's see. So Alison, you, you have access to um, our Marketing Mastery Workshop series. You have access to that. I am not familiar with um, the, the scope and the content of Grow Workspace's new program. Um, I know that everything that I've seen them do has been awesome. So um, you know, no- nothing but good things to say here. Um, in terms of, of how we differ, I mean, ours, I, I, again, I don't know. I don't know, but you can watch, I believe it was the last, um, the last uh, training before this one on our YouTube channel and see everything that's included in ours and what we'll be doing. And basically, what we're gonna be focusing on in sort of a small group workshop format uh, is mastering the systems in your business. Obviously, it's not just the marketing, uh, but it's mastering all of the systems in your business. Um, there's always going to be some, I mean, if you're, if you're do, if you're following more than one leader at a time, you're gonna eventually have some duplication of effort that you're doing, right? Uh, so I would really just kinda zero in on what the outcome is that you're looking for and then just commit to the thing that most, um, that most clearly serves that outcome, right? Um, I would not try to ride two horses at the same time here. I would, I would really encourage you to just pick one. Um, all of the recordings and everything from, uh, from what we're doing are going to be available. I don't know if that's the case for Grow Workspace or really any other program, if you guys are looking at other programs. Um, but the, the recordings will remain available to you. And then, of course, as you're going through and working on that information, you always have us here on Thursdays, right? But I, I would not try to spread yourself into four different workshops or different things at a time, uh, because you're not gonna retain that information if you're not doing the thing that it's showing for, you know, you to do. Uh, and your business needs you present to be doing the income producing activities seventy percent of the time. And the percentage of time that we're talking about here, right? You learning things to do stuff for your business, that fits into that hundred percent of time that you spend on your business. And so if you have time available to match that with seventy percent of doing the income producing activities and implementing what's being taught uh, in, in these things that you're, you're doing, that's great. Just make sure there's a balance, right? And that balance needs to be heavily in favor of new relationships, keeping up with those conversations um, and really mastering you in your business, which is your communication strategy, your ability to connect with and convert people over uh, to being new customers. Let's see, what else, what else? So having, having a website up and moving people to a Young Living member area, Camellia, these are great goals to have. Have one of them at a time. Pick one goal at a time and pick what serves your business most as it stands right now. If you have thirty or fewer personals that are active right now, don't worry about a member area yet. Work on getting the systems in place that support you, supporting those people, right? Who are your actives and that get you more of them. And once you're at that point, then you start just chipping away one thing at a time with the other things. And I would honestly, if you are at, you know, we're talking about your number one or number two and then maybe plus number three. If you're at number one and you're in living business, where you've got, you know, you aren't leading a team in that way just yet, um, it's going to actually behoove you to have a, a website first, right? Cause that website is going to help to serve to brand you and give you more authority and make you more successful when you're out in the world and you're prospecting, right? I would only put a member area before a website if you are probably gold or higher uh, at rank and, uh, and you feel like your time it has, is really swallowed a lot of the time with maintaining expectations of people uh, and, and educating and all of that kind of stuff. If you're really feeling the weight and the burden of, of being the educator and not knowing like how to effectively point people to the right place, the main reason why you wanna have a vault, right, is to be able to have a unified place that you point to. Where you just have your collection of all of the things that you've repeated and said and helped other people with before, where they're all in one place, where you could say, hey, that's in our member area, you should go check it out. Hey, that's in our member area, you should go check that out. But if you're not at the point where you have that demand of, of, you know, information from you and a need for information from you, from your people, then I, I wouldn't worry about that yet. I would focus on branding yourself and getting more leads and, and having more of those conversations that get you more of the customers that then create the need for the vault, if that makes sense. Uh, so Deb, uh, yeah, when I'm talking about a, a cus, a, a website, like the example I was just giving for Camellia, um, I am actually referring to creating a new one, because with Get Oil-ing, once you set your account up, you put in your name, you put in your, you know, your basic information, you put in your Young Living member number, you have a website. And it's beautiful and it's got your name on it and you can, you know, you can add your story and photo to it, which is great. Um, you don't even have to, but you can. Uh, and, and then, of course, you can share your site and use that as a, as a sharing tool for growing Young Living. Uh, so you have that out of the box, but what I'm referring to is, um, if your priority is to, um, is to get more leads, if you were choosing between having a member area and having a custom website, I would start with a website first and then, um, and then work on creating your member area second. Thank you for asking that question, so we could give that clarification. Alright, who else has questions or wants, uh, you know, some guidance on getting started or redirecting, getting a game plan in place? There's a lot of really good questions today. Feel free to raise your hand if you wanna come out and chat or if you um, wanna type it out, you could certainly put that into the Q and A or the chat here. Let me go real quick and show you guys inside the system, in case you don't know this, probably should have done this earlier in the call, but let me show you guys this real quick. Two places that I want you to remember to go as you're learning on your journey. I want you to remember to go right here, this guy. When you wanna look up something. So if I said, I want you to learn how to tag your contacts. I want you to go over here to this help center. You'll always see this little question mark here and type in tag and you can learn about contact tags right here, right? Really simple stuff, so un- Really simple stuff. So any of the concepts that we've been talking about, if you want to learn more about them, make sure that you go over to this help center first. Another place that you can go, if you want to search for something, a feature in your system, for instance, maybe you want to create a custom signature for your website, you can type in the word signature right here. And we'll take you right over here to the page where you can add your own email signature, right? Another place that you can go is, let's see, it's facebook.com/groups and Get Oiling Online. You can always come over here and chat with our community. I'm not logged in right now, so you can't see. And then finally, of course, if you can't find the answers you're looking for in those two places, you can reach out to our support. We do also have in-depth trainings on our YouTube channel. That's youtube.com/getoiling. There is a search feature on YouTube and you can search for those things if you want to go in depth as well. But if you ever feel like you're, you're like, I'm kind of short on time. I don't want to spend seven hours watching videos. And you're like, well, where can I go first to best learn about these things? Shoot us a message and, and then we can help to point you in the right direction. Do you have a resource for forming our story and bio? Yes, Rebecca, that is in the Brand My Business Workshop. So you can actually find that if you don't have it or if you're not signed up for it already, all you've got to do is go over here to my account settings. Scroll down here and there's the Brand My Business Workshop. Just click this and you're going to get access to it. And it is inside of the Get Oiling Member Area. So it's like the private area where all of our trainings and stuff are held with our courses and stuff. And, and you can get access to that there. So I actually have a couple of frameworks, quick little easy exercises for you to go through to write that out and then showing you as well in that course, where to go and put those things on your website. And this also includes, you know, how you position yourself, how you position Young Living. If you are in a place where you are ready to start branding yourself, if you are an also number three on that list, the Brand My Business Workshop is going to be an excellent place to go. Just make sure that you have handled the needs first. Make sure that you've got your VO uploads, you know how to tag, you're in touch with your people on a regular basis. And you are following an easy, simple flow of just at the very least giving yourself a to-do to follow up with somebody and keeping notes. So that you can always be on top of where someone is in their journey, so that you can best be supportive to them. It's really attractive to, to know that you've got access to great information that's written by experts from places like the Engagement Source and Grow Workspace and Modern Companion and other people that you can find on our partners page on the Get Oiling website. But, but none of that, you know, your ability to, to just broadcast out, hey, here's everything about Ningxia. That's not going to ever be a replacement for you being in touch with somebody and directly supporting them on their journey to get the products that they need. Let me see, you've got another question here. I know I asked this before and I need to write it down. What order do you recommend doing the trainings and workshops that you offer, branding your business to become an icon, get your groups off Facebook? Okay, so, so Alison, it depends on your goals. If you don't have systems in place yet where you are running your VO uploads and you are, you know, keeping in touch with your people and maintaining those conversations in your contact manager, that's going to be the, the first and most important thing to do. And that, those aren't even in courses. Those are literally in, you know, the, the trainings that I shared with you today. That's the very first, most important thing that needs to be done. If those things are in great running order for you and you're looking for the next thing, what I'm going to recommend is if you are number one on the list, right? Meaning you've got 30 or fewer personally enrolled active customers that you're serving, then you want to focus on things that put your brand out there so that you've got more credibility and you've, you've got a better and more effective way of working to get leads and, and to work with people toward getting started with Young Living. And then of course, if you are a number two, if you have 30 or more active customers and especially if you are gold or higher in rank, it's probably going to be a good idea for you to either concurrently work on those things. Maybe hire our team to develop one of those things for you or both and, and work on having a leveraged space for you to keep your information for onboarding and supporting your people. Now where your brand is concerned, become an icon, personal branding intensive is really a deep dive into the big things that you need in your business. So that's your vision. That's getting really clear and confident on that, how you communicate it. And then getting into things like how you spend your time and how you position yourself to become an authority brand using a content marketing strategy. So the, if you're a number three and you've got access to the, the personal branding intensive, that's going to be a thing that I'd recommend having in place before you start working on your website. Because it's going to really influence what you put onto your website. So from there, you would of course be going through the Brand My Business Workshop. So you've got, you know what you got to say, you know who you're, you're showing up as. And then of course, you're just following the steps there to get your pages built and everything set up the way that you want it. The, the email marketing mastery course, that's something you can do at any point. It does go over lead focused communication, which is going to be something that's more applicable when you have a customized website and a personal brand. But if you are in the place where you are first focusing on your people and your systems, if you're a number two on the list, then that may be something that you want to look at sooner and then the how to move your groups course. Can you include a link to the YouTube trainings in the help desk? Sometimes there's a gap in my head navigating the topic. Yeah, so it's a little challenging to do that. I think we can, we can look at ways that we can do that. We do have that in some cases where it is a direct answer to a question. The thing is with, with our content that we do on these calls and on YouTube, sometimes we get, we're, we're very strategically oriented and it might be around a particular outcome, right? So for instance, you know, we're talking about tags. You know, you could use your tags for a lot of things in Get Oiling and for a lot of different end purposes, right? You could be using tags because you have a multi-step funnel strategy that you're using with Facebook ads, right? Or it could just be, I want to know the difference between the moms and the dog owners or who is also a mob and a dog owner on my list. And so because of the breadth of, of sort of strategic advice that we give on, on, on these calls and of course, what's on our YouTube channel here, it could be a little distracting or misdirecting sometimes to, to like take every piece of YouTube content that we have and link it there with that. But we do also have, if you notice, shorter sort of how-to videos, usually stuff that Greg is able to put together that talks through a specific thing in a more general sense. But noted, and I think where, where we can do it, we can absolutely make sure we do more of it. But let me show you something real quick that you can do. If you want to learn about something in a more in-depth fashion, you can go over to our YouTube channel. It's youtube.com/getoiling. Click here on this little search bar and then type in what you want to learn or even better, go over here to playlists. And so you can actually see that we have getting started playlists. We have blogging and events. If you want to go straight to events, you have a vendor event coming up, go view this full playlist and pick the one that you want. I believe the way that it does this by default is it shows the oldest or, well, not necessarily. Anyway, but these, of course, you can see this is our newer branding for these and you can see how old they are. So blogging and events, you can see that here. We've got websites, funnels, lead generation, obviously all of these, the, the weekly work sessions is all of our calls. But then these are more topic specific. If you want to search those or you could literally type in, maybe you want to find the VO training, type in the word VO. And you'll see that this is the training that you want to start with, right? So definitely make use of that as much as possible. Oh, and that is such a great thing as well to share. Greg, put in our, our partners page. There are also some fantastic resources that folks in our community, leaders in Young Living have created, right? And you can find that under content here. So obviously first, we've got folks who make content that you can purchase and plug into your Get Oiling system. So Grow Workspace, Modern Companion, the Engagement Source, the Cabana. But then we also have incredible courses that also have their own resources and strategies, templates and things like that. So for instance, this is a phenomenal course that Linda Allen created. If you like using Zito or iToV and you're interested maybe in using those, she's got really smart systems and ways to set those up inside of this course. Paula has amazing funnels and beautiful pages. Ally's got gorgeous pages and a website tutorial here. Megan's got customization and gorgeous templates as well. We also have Go for Gold with Martha, which is a complete end to end on how she got to gold in six months with Young Living, including all of the templates and resources. We contributed a great deal of content to that and demonstrating how to use the Get Oiling system effectively to that end. So, and this is ever-growing, so I'd definitely be keeping an eye on it. You need blinders. Yeah, put your blinders on and focus on the order of things we talked about here today, honestly. Information that you can consume is only going to help you if you can put it to use right after you've consumed it, right? Needs first, yes. Needs first. We can want a bajillion things. Just write it down. Get a planner, get a little book, write it down. Right, I want to do this next. And you know what? FOMO is, I'm a marketer, I'm going to say this out loud, FOMO is a lie. Don't, don't worry about it. You're going to have what you need, especially where we're talking about implementing stuff that's in our system here. We are here to help you. We're not going to create artificial scarcity around the information that you need to grow your business. If it's something that your business needs or it's, it's a need that's related to getting the want done that you have, we've got you, right? We've got you. If you want to put your blinders on, just focus on what we're doing with you here and you'll be good, right? So, oh, good. You didn't know about the content section. Definitely be checking that out, especially if you want to save time with educational resources. Thank you guys so much for your amazing questions and we will be back again next week at the same time. We are always, always thrilled to have you here. If you have requests, if there's something in particular that you want to learn that you don't feel like you've been able to find, let us know. And you know, because these, these weekly sessions we do, they're for you. They're for your understanding, they're for supporting you on your path to growth. We're obviously not all the same. We sometimes need something a little different than the person next to us. So don't be afraid, reach out, let us know what you feel like you need if you can't find it. And we may just create one of these just for you. So we look forward to having you. We're so honored to be a part of your journey and we'll see you again next week, guys.